Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, February 8th, 2023. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have two of our three commissioners today. Commissioner Chang is traveling to Washington DC to advocate for the citizens of Deschutes County. At this time, citizen input. So we do have a request to speak. Michelle Bayard, please join us.
President.
Yes, thank you. And we do have your email on this same subject.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have had the opportunity to speak to you many times on your Wednesday morning meetings before. And, excuse me, I really appreciated being able to do so. However, I was always very frustrated not being able to make comments on topics that are on the agenda. A face-to-face discussion with you on any topic would be a very democratic way of weighing the pros and cons of any issue. It would be best to allow the public to speak three minutes about topics on the agenda as well. Not doing so seems undemocratic to me. I strongly request that you make such a change. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to respond to that. So, you know, as the Chair, we're setting up an orderly meeting. And when we have a public hearing on a matter, that's where we want, you know, just any input on the topic. And when we say we have a public hearing on a matter, that's published to the world, that we want to get engaged in a public hearing on this topic. So what we've seen, and we've seen it recently, is when, you know, a group of people get really interested and excited about a topic, which come and talk to us. But if we have a group of people that really testify and get engaged on a topic, and other people aren't notified, it feels like it could be swaying our decision at the last moment by showing the passion in the room on this topic. There is logic about what we're doing here. We're full-time commissioners. We're available at all times for communication. We read the emails, and we answer the phone calls. So that's the logic of what we're doing here.
Well, to respond to that, I've had many inputs from people unlike me who are working. And they really appreciate being able to come early, like nine o'clock, and make those comments. And not being able to attend those special meetings about the given topics is not practical for them. So that's part of the reason why I'm requesting that.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the room to speak on any other topic? And then seeing nobody in the room, is there anybody on Zoom? Thank you very much. Good morning, Doreen. Thank you. So this is time for public testimony on any matter. Doreen? You seem to be muted.
There, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. So, good morning. And you said testimony comments?
Yes.
I appreciate your drive to clean up the massive outstanding land use and housekeeping items. However, in your haste as you pull documents from the past 10 years and push through nearly 100-page housekeeping items, I feel the intent and integrity of land use planning and changes is getting a little jaded. We all know the intent of posting notice and notifying impacted residents is exactly that. To cut your responsibility to a few hundred feet is absolutely unacceptable. If you actually accounted for impact, this would include a far larger notification process. Is improper to wait on performing traffic studies and impact analysis. One example is how this plays out with the airport living nearly two miles away with a waypoint set over home, creating an unlivable and untenable toxic health. Air traffic is at the heart of environmental injustice. If you address environmental justice, you address all species and constitutional protections. You cannot describe to environmental justice and climate goals while increasing nonessential air traffic and road traffic. Those experiencing the most injurious impacts from mine to refine to overhead air pollution and climate impacts are realizing little to no benefit with endless adverse, even life-threatening effects. Please protect your citizens, our lands, futures, and wildlife, and do not contribute further to adverse climate and species collapse or the injustice of increased environmental burden on those who are least complicit in the planetary fray. I ran across a newly released study last night, Biodiversity in Focus, United States Edition, reveals an alarming conclusion. Thirty-four percent of plants and 40% of animals are at risk of extinction, and 41% of ecosystems are at risk of range-wide collapse. I intend to continue bringing cost to you until priority is placed on protecting residents and sustainability more than air traffic, which actually seems to run in the red surprisingly often for such a warmly received toxic scourge. We already know we have endangered and protected species, which have been conveniently excluded from most local NEPAs and impact equations. I only ran across this report last night, so don't have details yet. But it appears in this newly released study from NatureServe, a network of over 16 network programs, government and NGOs, with over 1,000 conservation professionals. We've identified, they've identified nearly 4,000 at-risk plant species and nearly 2,000 animal species in Oregon. The flight training and air traffic, which comes at great financial and health and land costs to locals, needs to be addressed and properly accounted for. And protection for citizens needs to come quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I have a few emails. One is requesting GO5 updates for the Wildlife Inventory. And this is an email from Condon, Oregon. Also asking about future Coffee with a Commissioner events. So this will be an effort that the Commissioners are doing individual published events, Coffee with a Commissioner. Commissioner Chang's done this previously in Sisters recently, and I'll be scheduling one up myself. Are you going to be involved with that, Commissioner?
Actually, I have coffee a lot. I'm always having coffee with someone. So, you know, if someone wants to see me, please let me know so that I can have, you know, if you've got an issue, and I just feel like, you know, if you have a whole bunch of people there. Anyway, I'm always happy to have coffee.
Yep, that's great. Okay, and then also, there's a request for the learning about the process to have five Commissioners instead of three. And I'll be following up with this person, and I've talked to him recently also. So at this time, Consent Agenda. So there's seven items on the agenda today, Consent Agenda.
Yes, and I just have one teeny correction, I believe, on the minutes from January 18th. If Brenda can go back and see, I thought it was 99.5 million that the state awarded Clackamas and not 94. I mean, that's, I thought it was almost 100,000, 100 million, excuse me. So that's why we're asking for 25 million. So anyway, yeah, for the courthouse extension. It's on page three of seven. So that's the only thing I saw. Otherwise, so move the Consent Agenda.
Okay, and I'll second it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. At this time, Action Items, item number eight, Update from Neighbor Impact on Domestic Well Grant Loan Program. Thanks for joining us today.
Yeah, thanks for having us. I'm John Cox. I'm the Lending Director at Neighbor Impact, and this is Patty Wilson, the Deputy Executive Director. We're here to discuss our Deschutes County Well Assistant Grant and Loan Program and its outcomes. Just to summarize, back in end of July, we went into an agreement for operation of the Well Assistance Program. We were allocated $585,200 in general state funds through SB5561. We took a 10% admin fee of $58,000, and the contract period were for funds to be fully obligated by June 30th of this year, 2023, and expended by September 30th. So we broke it down into two parts. One was a rebate program, and the other was a loan program, the county well rebate. We approved 84 applications. We deployed $167,000. And the geographic distribution, you can see, was primarily focused in Lapine with 50 homes. And then we had 18 in Bend, and as the other areas show, lesser.
Just to repeat, you said 50 homes in Lapine?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted that to be clear in the record.
That's well replacement and repair for existing well.
Yes.
Correct. This is, I'm speaking to the well rebate piece of our program. So we had 50 homes in Lapine, 18 in the Bend area, seven in Sun River, six in Redmond, two in Sisters, one in Terrebonne. So that's kind of, I'm doing a geographic breakdown of each of the programs.
And those were direct grants to somebody that had already started a process or knew they had to do something to get water running again?
Correct. So these were $2,000 grant allocations for people who experienced dry wells, and there was no income limit tied to these individuals in this specific piece of the funding. Now, the other side was the well program, which was designated for middle-low-income families. And we approved 14 applications. We served 31 individuals. We allocated a little over $360,000. Again, the focus, nine homes in Lapine, two in Redmond area, one in Bend, one in Sisters, one in Terrebonne. So overall, we served 98 households that were assisted through this program. We fully obligated all of the money at this point. We've been at this for a little, around six months, and we're obligated six months or so before the deadline. So as you can see, the demand was steady, and the process is still, we've obligated, we have a few projects that are still left due to one reason or another, but the funds are obligated and committed.
So, oh, John, just to ask, what interest rate did the loans end up going out at? I know we were-
Five, 5.5%.
5.5, okay. And what's the payback? How long can they take to pay this money back?
It depends on their ability to pay. I take each loan individually, and I either defer it out completely until they sell the house, turn it into a rental, or pass away. Or if there's a little left at the end of the month, I suggest an interest-only payment so their lien doesn't increase over time. And then if they have a decent wage and debt-to-income ratio, I discuss an amortization, whether it be 10, 15, or even 30-year. So I give them that option based on where they are financially.
So, and then, these loan programs are kind of the total cost of the project, probably, where the grant programs are just reimbursing somebody for the-
Correct.
Having to expend a large amount and taking off the edge, this is the full cost of projects, mostly.
Mostly, yeah. So basically, you know, we saw the root of this in Lapine, and that water table was relatively high for the area. And so these wells are, projects are, on average, coming in at $25,000. Okay? If you get out into the Terrebonne, Alfalfa area, they can reach as high as $70,000. We've had to do that on occasion, take the maximum allowable loan amount set by you guys at $50,000. And we have participated the difference to get these projects finished with our own revolving loan fund. And when these funds do recycle and pay back, they will go into this revolving loan fund and go out to the next person who needs our assistance.
Great.
Sure. So, the demand really continues. We're getting three to four phone calls a day. Right now, we have a waitlist. This slide was made at the first of the month, and right now, we have a waitlist of 21. And daily, three or four phone calls. So right now, we are seeking different capital so we can continue because the demand until the drought is over, I think is going to be a really big issue.
Is there anything, kind of themes, that you learned about this? You know, the condition of the wells, or the age of the wells, or depth to water? Just, and, you know, that would be for a geologist or hydrogeologist to answer. But, I mean, what did you learn from, from your point of view?
Well, just based on geography, the soils are different in the different areas. Therefore, the different trucks, the different drill types, the different depths, the cost. So we're just, you know, what I'm really realizing is that this issue isn't going away. And the money did. So that's where our biggest hurdle is at this point, is that the program is a well-oiled machine. We just ran out of gasoline. So we-
And the needs there, for sure. Well, so I guess, were there, you know, because I've heard of instances of the, you know, the very shallow well, you know, put in in the 70s, which had failed, which, you know, long-term, you know, success, basically, when you think about a 40 or 50-year-old well. So, I mean, any rule of thumb there, or any?
Well, I mean, also, what you experience too, is that you have your neighbor drills the well, and then you get a call from their neighbor a week later, and now they need their well drilled. And that's a scenario. You also have a lot of illegal water usage that's putting a strain on the aquifers, and a few other. Obviously, our drought is the biggest issue, but-
So, simple depth to groundwater is, I mean, just that's simple. That's what it is.
It's that simple.
Okay, that's kind of what I was wondering.
When you say illegal water usage, no, Commissioners, we went last, well, actually, September of 2021, to the 49 Groves over in Alfalfa, that, you know, they finally arrested someone who was running that operation. And we saw them using all kinds of water for that operation. But what are you referring to as illegal?
I was referring to that, yes.
Okay. So, we still have the black market here, then?
Yes.
Yeah, we still do. Okay. That will help my testify for another bill that we're working on. And actually, we're sending numbers to Representative Helm's office. I need to get back with them and see what kind of allocation they're going to do for this year. But I did pull up numbers from the different well drillers in our county for last year, and gave Representative Helm some, you know, some numbers that we would need in Deschutes. So I'll check in with them.
I mean, it was our impression that the prices of these projects consistently went up as the year went on. And we had been doing this, you know, the year and a half before this rolled out. So we've been in it a while and just watched the prices double, basically, in the last three years.
Or they double when you're doing the job, too? Don't, I mean, that happened to my neighbor.
Yeah.
They were quoted something, and then, you know, like, whatever.
Three-quarters of them end up like that. More so, not in Lapine. That's pretty easy to pin down because of the basis of the project. When you get into the outer-lined areas, anything can happen. And you hit these caverns, and there you go, $10,000 in cement you got to pour down in there to fill the cavern. It's just such an open-ended project for each and every individual when they get started, that you really never know what the, and price is going to be for, and some of these people, it's just, it's really difficult on them. And, you know, we've really stepped out and filled-
Probably a cost per depth, but we don't know what the depth is going to look like or what the complicating factors might be.
Exactly. And what type of drill. They may have to bring out a new truck, another instance. We had one that drilled down 400 feet and didn't hit water, so they started all over in a different spot. So there's different ways to troubleshoot. But the reality is, you know, the goal is to hit the water. And at what cost becomes the question. And the bigger question is, we do all this, where are we going to be five years from now as well? So.
So, the difference between a rebate program and a grant program. So you said you're able to use some funds that are in the organization, and I'm assuming those are all for loans. So then there can be a pool of dollars flowing back and forth?
Correct.
So if we were asking the legislature, do we want to kind of put equal balance on grants and loans, or just having a loan portfolio?
I think that it would be a loan portfolio to, because this is going to be an ongoing continuum. And I feel that, you know, well, just based on historical data, we're going through, we could do, you know, at a minimum of $1 million a year right now.
I think I asked for 1.5.
Yeah, that would be, that would be even better. And it would, and it would be used.
Right. So, okay. We'll be doing some check-in?
Well, thank you for the update. Thank you for your professionalism and getting these dollars out the door. So, I mean, that is the value, is acting, being able to respond. I understand there's a lot of calls today that, no more resources, but we did definitely successfully implement.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Are you going to be getting any more federal funds, do you think?
We are investigating and thinking, and we'll be talking with Nick and the county about doing some CDBG funding.
In addition to the WORF program with the state, Carrie, so I've been, I'm on bimonthly meeting with her, and they have this, the remainder of Governor Brown's funds that was allocated to the state. She's redirecting a lot of that money to Deschutes County right now, over and above the allotment for Deschutes County. So, people are continuing to get served, just not through Neighbor Impact at this point. But we're kind of cross-collateralizing, if you will. And some of these people that we've done our loans for, we've, we double app them with the state at the same time. So when they get approved, they get their rebate check up to $50,000, and they take that money, and they pay our loan back, and then I can deploy.
And you can reload that money out.
So that's helping right now, too. It's kind of a, you know, we're juggling here, but really, we're out of money.
Okay.
Understood. Oh, understood.
You can expect to hear from Andrew Spreadwell from our agency in the next few months about Deschutes County sponsoring the CDBG.
I think we already were notified that may be coming. Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. Congratulations on getting the money out the door.
Thank you.
Item number nine, this is a public hearing on an ordinance implementing housekeeping amendment for Oregon administrative rules. Maybe legal, or the clerk?
Dave should be.
Dave's going to step in? Okay.
Yes.
Hey, Commissioners?
Good morning.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, what you have before you today is a, basically, a housekeeping amendment that we need. As it turned out, our county code provision had set a specified dollar amount, specific to the charge to have arguments in a voter's pamphlet, and that was in, not in compliance with the administrative rule. The administrative rule sets that price based on population of the county. And so we need a public hearing today to make the amendment that we provided to you through Section 1.12.050 of the Deschutes County Code. I did provide in your packet a red line, as well as the clean version. And as you can see, the red line is simply removing the specific reference to $300 and simply referencing to the identified amount in the administrative rule. We've indicated on the ordinance that goes with the text amendment to the code, we suggested an emergency adoption, rather than wait the 90 days, which would put us outside of the next election, which is in March. So if the board's inclined to do that. Now would be the time to open the public hearing, see if there's anybody there that wishes to testify. And then, statute recommendation would be that you then close the public hearing, and that you have an adopt, and move to approve ordinance 2020B-003 with the emergency clause.
Great. Do you know offhand, what does the OAR define as the filing fee for, currently? Like, you know, as, if, if and when this is adopted, what's the starting point?
It's $400.
Okay, so it's 400.
Yeah, and actually, the clerk's office has been charging $400 fee, consistent with the administrative rule.
Okay.
And as opposed to the county code that identified 300.
Great.
You know, back in the day, the county code did a lot of that, where the county code would identify specific dollar amounts, let's say, that were subject to change. And so we've gone through, this is, this is one of a number we've done over the last handful of years, where we're changing them to include references to the, either administrative rule or the ORS that actually creates the fee, as opposed, and that way, we don't have to go in every time it changes and change it from 300 to 350 to 400. Or maybe it goes backwards once, maybe it goes to 250, I'm not sure. But regardless, this just keeps us in alignment with the state law that essentially overrides our county code anyway with regard to elections.
Great, good information. So this is current practice, and this is, yeah, putting a reference into state OAR instead of that number specifically. So at this time, this is a public hearing on the ordinance number 2023-003 to comply with Oregon administrative rules. Is there anybody willing or wanting to testify on this matter? This is a public hearing on the matter. Is there anybody online? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on this matter. Any discussion, Commissioner?
So, Dave, you're saying we can pass this by emergency?
Yes, you can.
With two of us?
Yes, it has to be unanimous with a quorum, and two of you are a quorum, and two of you would be unanimous.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
And this is first and second reading?
This would be first and second reading, emergency adoption title only of ordinance 2023-003. And Commissioner Dare, to your point, yeah, that's, people have been confused over that, but the way the statute provides is, it requires unanimity for emergency adoption, but your meeting can go forward, provided that you have a quorum. So, in a three-person board, you can have a quorum of two that meets, and so, provided that it's a two-o vote, you can make an emergency adoption. And again, if you're uncomfortable with that, and you don't go with it, we're just going to have the inconsistency with the voter's pamphlet in March, where folks will be charged $400, and they might scratch their head and say, but your code says 300, and then we have to tell them, but the administrative rule says 400. And so, the clerk asked that we clean this up. I don't know if he's down there in the room or not, but he did ask that we clean this up, and so, that's why we've done it, and suggested the emergency adoption.
Okay, it is February 8th, right? Yes, so we do need to do it now.
So, having completed, and that's kind of deliberations, are you ready to make a motion?
Yes, I move approval of ordinance number 2023-003, amending Section 1.12.050 of the Deschutes County Code to comply with the Oregon administrative rules. Do I need to say by emergency only?
Yes, we request that.
And first and second reading?
And first and second reading.
And that be by title only?
By title only? By title only, Dave?
There we go. Now it looks complete. So, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
I will second it. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So, this is first and second, first reading of ordinance amending Section 1.12.050 of the Deschutes County Code, ordinance number 2023-003. And second reading, an ordinance, by title only, an ordinance amending Section 1.12.050 of the Deschutes County Code. So, move for adoption?
Yes. Move for adoption of ordinance number 2023-003?
By emergency.
See only?
By emergency?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll second it at this time. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So, just a few words changed, but the clerk will appreciate it at this time. Thank you very much.
Very much.
And the people paying the fee won't?
Well, as I say, it's current practice. That was the end thing we learned.
Right.
Item number 10, acceptance of a grant for the Oregon Health Authority for mobile crisis intervention services, and authorization to add two FTE within the Health Services Fund.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Janice Garsot, Director of Health Services. And I'm going to introduce a new crisis manager to you this morning, and let him run this agenda item. So, good practice. To my left is Adam Goggins. He has been with our crisis programs for five years. He's been in the field of mental health for 13, and he was at the hospital, at St. Charles Hospital, working with acute populations for seven years prior to coming to us. He was a supervisor in crisis for...
Three years.
Three years, and is newly a manager of the crisis program. So, lots of skills with a really tough population, and I will let him take it from here.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank y'all very much for having me. I really appreciate it. So, I just wanted to, I guess, come before you today and talk about seeing if we could request acceptance of the OHAs one-time funding of $428,569 for mobile crisis funding, and also to request approval for Resolution Number 2023-010, to add two FTEs, which would include one, essentially, crisis case manager for non-law enforcement response, and one administrative supervisor for, also to kind of help with our crisis response program. This is, these two FTEs will actually help to, with our kind of upcoming non-law enforcement crisis response program, where it'll help to kind of complete our program and help us to be able to go 24/7, which we're tentatively slated to be going on May 1st is our launch date. Awesome.
Great, thank you. So, we already have a mobile crisis access team. Can you explain a little bit about how this complements or helps?
Yes, sir.
Or what's different?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this is an initiative that has been going on in some manifestation for the past several years, but has been really kind of picking up steam over the past year, specifically past couple of months in particular, where we're going to be responding to the community without law enforcement is the largest change. And so, there's new Oregon administrative rules that have been kind of released that have kind of provided a guideline for us to be able to do that, where we have to go out with two-person teams. There are certain training requirements that we have to adhere to, certain data collection requirements that we have. But fundamentally, we're going to be able to respond to mental health crisis without law enforcement being present. And so, thus far, we've been in communication with all of our local law enforcement entities, 911 dispatch, and have been coordinating with them on the plan, where law enforcement will still take the highest acuity, where there's some active safety concerns, but generally, kind of moderate to lower acuity, where maybe there are safety concerns, but they're not as present. Those will be kind of directed to us directly from 911, which is a change in our program currently, where previously, law enforcement would receive a phone call from 911, and then they would call us as kind of a second responder. So, it's transitioning it from second responder model to more of a first responder model.
So, instead of public safety showing up and calling MCAT, this crisis response will roll up maybe in a white vehicle from behavioral health, instead of a public safety car and an officer or two?
Yes, sir.
I was thinking what it'll look like on the ground. So, then, these are discussions that are happening on, would it always be dispatched from 911, from our public safety answering point?
We have a couple of points of entry. We're trying to make it as open as possible, so that folks just have more options to come in. We think that the majority of our calls are going to come from 911, but we still do have kind of options for, essentially, community-based professionals, 988, which is the National Suicide Hotline. They can coordinate and consult with us, and they can do referrals as well to us, and we can dispatch directly from there without law enforcement.
Great.
From the stabilization center.
From the stabilization center.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Well, thank you for your dedication to your field. Adam, I can only imagine that you've seen and dealt with a lot of things, and I'm so glad that you, you're still part of, you know, now you're part of our team. So, thank you for doing that. No, it just, it will be interesting to see. I, it, a lot of things happened, and, you know, it just seems like we hear about police officers being shot and killed, and especially, it seems like domestic violence seems to be like, really, a scary situation for people. And I would hope that your team wouldn't be ever called first to a domestic violence situation.
No, ma'am. We actually have criteria that specifically, we have it outlined at, we have the criteria outlined very specifically on what types of calls we'll go to, and whether or not we go with law enforcement or without law enforcement. And that is very much an exclusionary criteria for us going out. If there's some kind of active dispute going on between two individuals on the scene, we might still dispatch, but we would co-dispatch with law enforcement and go from there. Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's, I really appreciate you being here at the county, and I'm sure Janice is, you know, really happy to be able to work with you. So, thank you.
So, we think of stabilization center as a resource for central Oregon, as in Jefferson and Crook County also. Is that correct?
So, our non-law enforcement response will be mostly the county, but we do sometimes have a regional response. But I, I think we are primarily initially starting out just dispatching non-law enforcement response within the county.
But I'm just thinking through that these are dollars, one-time dollars coming through Oregon Health Authority for this purpose.
Yes.
Is Jefferson and Crook involved in some fashion? Are they going to get dollars at all like this? Or is this kind of a pilot program, showing that this could work?
So, this particular, there have been several crisis pots of money that have come out as one-time funds. This particular amount is a formula grant. I believe the 11 million was a formula to each county. Those counties typically get less, because they're smaller, so it's often population-based. I'm not sure what the amounts were. I'm sure they will be trying to stand up something similar with the resources that they have, but I think we're fortunate to be a larger county, and it makes it possible for us. And we also had the partnership with the City of Bend that helped fund a position that helped support this project. So, we're able to pull together a number of resources to have coverage 24/7 of two people versus one person. I'm not certain how the other counties will pull that off.
That's fine, just kind of thinking big picture there. Okay, anything else? Is there a motion?
Okay, it looks like we need two motions, then. The first motion is to move approval to accept the Oregon Health Authority's one-time mobile crisis funding.
And I will second it, in the amount of $428,569. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
And second motion is to move approval of Resolution Number 2023-010, to add one regular FTE behavioral health specialist position, and one regular FTE administrative supervisor position within the Health Services Fund effective March 15th of 2023.
And I will second it. Any other discussion? Question is, this is based at stabilization center?
Yes.
Are we running out of room over there for people on staff?
It's a little tight, but we definitely, we, we're resourceful, and we can figure things out as we need to.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just acknowledging that we're going to start to fill that facility up, too, and what's the next step there? And maybe diversifying services, or, yeah. We got some capacity coming online in Redmond. We'll see where it all goes.
But we do need to get the latest numbers from how many people you've seen at the stabilization center. I know that some people go there several times. You don't happen to know how many people, unique individuals we've served since the start of it. Holly usually has those numbers.
I apologize. I, we have those numbers. I don't have them with me, but I can...
If you want to, if you can send them to us, just to see, because there is, there's a group of people that do seem to use it more than others. And I know that, what, Crook County was using it like 3% of the time or something? So, I know that other counties were using it, but we really would like to see the breakdown and know.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll make sure to get that to you.
Okay.
Immediately.
Thank you.
And for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much on that item.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, great to see you. Item number 11, an amendment to an agreement with OHA extending the term for grant funding for mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention, and problem gambling services.
I'm waiting for my...
There you go.
My phone-a-friend expert to join me at the podium.
Financial.
Yeah. Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. We are requesting approval of chair signature on document number 2023-119, amending an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for our, it says public health services. This is really the contract that pays for our behavioral health services. By way of explanation, our biennial contract with the Oregon Health Authority that funds many service elements, that fund a number of services in behavioral health and health services, typically expires on the calendar year, unfortunately. They, the Oregon Health Authority made a decision to extend the contract this year through the end of the fiscal year and the end of the biennium, because they are working through several sort of gnarly contract discussions in the civil commitment rules and in a couple of other lanes. And so, as a way to just continue to build collaboration with community mental health programs and CCOs who are working through some of the changes in the contract language and rules, they extended the contract. And that's what this agreement really represents, is continuing those funds through to the end of this fiscal year and the end of the biennium. It pays for many, many things. I can certainly provide some detail, but I think you're relatively familiar with this county financial assistance award language and service areas. But if you do have questions, we're happy to answer those questions.
So, the 4.5 million, Cheryl, for half a year? What was our whole year contract, including Amendment 6? Was that all for last year?
So, that would have been for last year. I can work on getting that for you.
And I just wondered, did they allocate anything for inflation? Healthcare costs seem to be going up.
Yeah, so they did, last calendar year, make an adjustment, inflationary adjustment. What we noticed in this particular contract is that some of those inflationary adjustments did not occur. So, there are a number of errors that the state recognizes in this particular amendment. Inflationary adjustments for some of those service elements is one of those errors that they anticipate correcting in the coming weeks. Another error, they duplicated some of our funding. So, that $4.5 million that you see in this particular amendment is actually not what we ought to be getting. It's about 1.2 more than we thought we would be getting. In addition, there's 815,000 reimbursement amount, which is more than we thought we would be getting as well. We asked for some additional, but certainly not that amount. So, they've...
Doesn't this kind of make you really nervous, though?
Little bit.
Yeah, like, really? I know that we, I was at a meeting where they were asking for this to be continued, because there is definitely some issues going on with the funding. But when they make this many errors, like, who is in charge in Salem?
So, we, so we have in writing an email that they are going to reconcile and correct the errors in the agreement, and we do trust that that will happen. And it invariably does happen over time. It sometimes takes them back and forth. So, we know that we'll get to an accurate amount. They did request that we go ahead and get the contract signed, just so that we are actually actively funded to do the work in this period, this time period. And in fairness to the OHA, they've had, you know, a profound leadership change. They have a new governor. They have a new OHA director. They have a new OHA behavioral health director. And I don't know, maybe three other major leadership positions that have changed. So, I think they're playing catch-up, the way organizations sometimes do when there's major change. So, we're a little nervous, but it's, this is sort of predictable messiness around the edges of change.
It's always change management...
Yes.
...in the health department when it comes to budget. Change management. And, I mean, but as I say, you know, annual budgeting, it's like this, too. You know, with, last year, we were doing this. We're not going to have these resources the same way. Next year, we're going to do this, move some people around, who's funded for what. But if, as long as we can stay on top of it, it's real important to provide these services also. It's really good to get to that concept of reconcile. So, we're signing a piece of paper that says, this money's coming, but it's going to be adjusted. So, it's great that we just had that conversation now.
Yeah.
Good catch, Commissioner?
No, no, I mean, it's all here.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this doesn't have anything to do with that CBO funding, does it? That...
No.
No, because apparently, only, that's a really challenging issue for 31 counties, I believe, in this, in the state. Two counties don't have it. Four are happy with that CBO funding, and the other, other ones are really frightened about what's... about what's, you know, it's a decision from Salem, and it's not reality. Like, they have a CBO in Jefferson County who's never been there. Like, it's the same thing, I believe, in Umatilla County.
Yeah. It's, it's. That's really in the, thank you, Commissioner, that's really in the public health lane right now.
Right.
Although I think we're going to see, I think the Measure 110 funding and how that rolled out was sort of a similar concept of really building capacity and equity in communities by making sure you're not just funding the same old players, which I certainly think is not a bad idea. I think it sometimes happens maybe without adequate planning and including the people that understand the lay of the land. So, we made good use of Measure 110 funding and built a partnership, and our co-funded CBOs are great partners, so we think that's possible. But we hope that the legislature will pay attention to how CBO funding is rolled out in the public health lane and maybe help us help them plan so that it's a thoughtful rollout. And both the health authorities and the community-based organizations that help us achieve health outcomes are supported by the funding.
I'll word, I'll change my words to dynamic change management. Instead of just change management.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a great, that's a great segue to budget discussions coming.
Yeah, I know. It's coming.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or is there a motion?
Yes. I move approval of Chair signature of document number 2023-119, amending the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for public health services.
Behavioral health.
Oh.
Side of the house. Yeah, she said.
Oh, this is incorrect, then?
Yeah.
It should say behavioral health.
Should say behavioral health. Apologies, we did not catch the error.
And I will second it. Any other discussion? Seeing done, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Did you have something?
No, I just, interesting. I mean, I wrote it down, behavioral health, but I'm, okay. Interesting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're at 9:40, 48, and we're on the last item. So, transfer, item number 12, transfer and extension of a limited duration position for project manager to work with homeless camps.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. This item requests the extension of a limited duration position. The position is currently in the Health Services Department and works with the COVID Response and Recovery Team. The limited duration position is scheduled to end March 31st. This request would extend that limited duration position an additional three months at an approximate cost of $26,000. The position would then work on homeless camp closures as the project manager. There's quite a bit of coordination that must take place in terms of working with the people who live in the camps, as well as cleanup of the area after people relocate. So, this position would serve as a project manager, work with the City of Bend on Huddle Road, and also work with county staff on the DSL removal process. The staff report outlines the different tasks the project manager would work on, and if the board supports this, we would look for a motion today to direct staff to develop a budget adjustment and come back for board approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, this is ARPA dollars proposal. I think of the spreadsheet. Is it already a reserve item, or is this kind of off of other?
I would check with finance, yeah. I've alerted them, and they're, they're going to, we'll come back with, with a proposal if the board supports this on which, which areas are the ARPA dollars. Or if the board wants to use other funds, that's available as well.
Any thoughts on that, Commissioner?
Oh, I did send Janice an email yesterday. I remember when I was first elected that the Health Department gave me like a diagram, a spreadsheet of all of the different employees. And I, as, to quote someone I know well, it's like we have a lot of people, a black hole over there, and I would love to see, like, all the names and what they're doing. So, we're moving someone from COVID. Is there anybody else working, still working in COVID?
Yes, there are quite a few people still working in COVID. And if you recall, in December, we came to you with a proposal to shrink the COVID team from 16 to eight. It has not shrunk to eight yet, but it is slowly shrinking through vacancies and positions ending in March and then in June. So, yes, there are still people working in COVID. And I did reach out to Emily this morning to just understand what this role was doing and where the work is, if you're interested to know how that will be handled going forward once this individual is no longer working on the COVID recovery team.
You're saying an update on COVID efforts?
I'm.
So, this is moving one person to another duty?
Yeah, yes.
Were you offering just now?
I was just, I, I guess I had imagined that you might wonder what happens to their work if their position ends.
Okay.
In March. So, I can certainly tell you where we are with that or answer other questions. In terms of the staffing, we have an org chart. It's extensive because we have 430 employees. It's a public document. It's on our intranet. If it doesn't provide you information about positions that you need, we can go deeper than that, of course. Our annual report also is another great document to access to look at overall staffing, each team, how they're staffed, what they're doing. So, if those two aren't good ways to get a sense of what staff are doing and how they're deployed, we're certainly open to hearing about other ways to sort of represent that. Be hard to do it in one page? We could try. There might be some ways to collapse some positions, but we're happy to answer questions about staffing and try to make.
So, in December, you tell us you were going down from 16 to eight?
Over a period of two years. So.
Over two years?
Yes. Over a period of two years. So, there was, there were ARPA funds that extended some of the limited duration positions that were going to end. One was going to end in December. Two, I think, were ending in Mar, I mean, they're all over the place. Some end in March, some end in June, others ended next December. So, we brought to you an entire plan of stepping those positions down over time, ending in two years with, I believe, just two FTE remaining in the COVID recovery response and eight starting in, I don't have it in front of me. I would have to pull it up. But I can, I can probably pull it up on my phone, actually.
What comes to mind is the group of people that all went into the Capitol last night to hear the President speak, and there may have been two masks in the whole room. So, I'm just, you know, aligning with the community expectations about the efforts we're doing is, you know, something we could probably look at again in the near future.
Yeah.
Whatever that looks like. You know, because, I mean, there may be, you know, these are the duties, and this is the need that we're not even seeing as much anymore.
Yeah. I mean, what, what we're really focused on right now are recovery efforts. So, the team really pivoted away from the emergency response to COVID as the emergency begins to wind down and pivoted towards more recovery efforts. So, now, instead of standing up a mass vaccination clinic, for example, we're doing things like making sure that we continue to offer clinics to provide vaccine to vulnerable populations that are not able to access vaccine easily. We're ensuring that we're continuing to be able to answer questions about outbreaks or respond to outbreaks when they occur in congregate care settings. So, even though COVID is definitely not impacting our community in the way that it was even eight months ago, if you have an outbreak in a nursing facility, you really need your public health folks to be responding to that. So, we use our COVID recovery team and our advancement and protections team to wrap services around those kinds of locations. We also ensure that we keep the community updated about where things are with COVID. We continue to have some interaction with our emergency management partners. So, there are activities that continue, but they are definitely happening at a level that's significantly less frequent and less intensive and less costly, frankly, than they were when we were in the middle of the crisis. And that, hopefully, that's the phenomenon we're going to continue to watch over time. So.
Thank you.
We all want that.
Any other questions?
So, this person I'm taking, assuming, has been identified, and they're going to move now, as soon as possible, to this, this position, running the program with the City of Bend, or moving people?
That's correct. And, and with the planning of the DSL land as well.
Working in the Joint Office? Is that the idea?
No, we, we talked about where the position should reside. It's going to remain in the Health Department, working with Emily, but it would be working closely with, with the Joint Office.
This is really part of that vision of transitioning the COVID recovery team to an emergency preparedness and response capacity in health services so that when these kinds of circumstances come, come up where there's a need that affects public health that's urgent, we have some capacity to pivot staff in that direction. In this particular case, it's a very specific need. It's kind of a full-time project. It's a 90-day, I believe, funding request for that particular position. But hopefully, this is something we can help support in some way, either through guidance or helping to staff on occasion, certain kinds of activities with this team.
So, really, is it really going to be through June 30? I mean.
My understanding is that Cheyenne is still really working closely with Eric Crop and Eric King and her Board of Directors on staffing her office. So, what she determines as she works through that process over time is necessary for her ongoing work, really is her call in collaboration with the board that she reports to. My understanding is the intention for this position is 90 days of funding.
Yeah, this is separate from, from the Joint Office.
Commissioner, but if I may offer, we're requesting funding for the, through the balance of this fiscal year, but you're exactly right. We may not complete the work on addressing the camps, working with the people in the camps. We don't know what all the circumstances are going to be with the DSL property, coordination with the City of Redmond, with the airport zone property in the City of Redmond. The work may continue, and so I, just in full disclosure, we may ask in the budget, potentially to extend this position until such time that we can complete that, which could be a couple more months. We, we haven't determined.
I thought you were going to say a couple more years, Nick. Honestly.
Our, our hope is by fall at the latest, but, but until, until we hire the person and we really begin to work with, with both cities and the property and, and, not the property, with the residents in, in the camps, we may not have a full understanding of just how long it's going to take.
And I was just out at China Hat, and to see the destruction of the trees, the property, the trash, the burnouts, yeah, my, my drive-through, that was, I hadn't been there for a while, and, and the, the frightening fact of the people that live in that neighborhood that, you know, talking to the woman who had the bullets going by her head two weeks ago. So, you know, we've, we've got China Hat too, that we can't, I know it's on federal land, but it's definitely part of Deschutes County, and it's, and it can't be ignored.
We're certainly pleased to continue to work with the board with this position as we move through these three areas and for the subsequent areas. If that's what the board's desire is, we'll certainly continue those conversations and seek appropriate funding to address it.
Well, and, sorry, I, I just want to be sure that we have realistic expectations for this one individual. My understanding.
Well, that's why you're saying it's through June, and I'm thinking like.
Yeah.
Maybe they don't want to work after June, but I'm thinking.
Oh, I think this individual would be very interested in doing good work ongoing for the county. But I, my understanding is the need at the moment is for a person to help project plan these three planned events. And really, they're not responsible for the closure. They're responsible for coordinating the services that are going to support the people impacted by the closure and helping coordinate with county people that are involved in supporting whatever has to happen in terms of cleanup to address the closure. So, I really, I just, in fairness to this really lovely employee who may be tasked with a complicated project, I want to set realistic expectations about the scope of her work, which is really focused on just how do we support a couple hundred folks, potentially, who are impacted by planned activities and make sure that we're coordinating that well. So, that's, that's really the scope of this particular piece of work. If I've got it right. Okay.
So, we, we saw the numbers point in time, what, 200 from Redmond? I don't know if they're all part of that.
I don't know.
Saw that number, and then I heard that there were approximately maybe 75 on Huddle Road. So, I know we were up to 111 a while ago, but when I drove down the road the other day, didn't, yeah, I, you know, I was told 60 to 75. So, we are definitely, and then, of course, we have our safe parking, which has started in Redmond, thank goodness, because those people are able to get some help and transition back to, you know, their apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's some really good work there, and I thank that, that party, the, you know, the safe parking people in Redmond and Bend that really do their job very effectively.
So, who is this person working for, or what?
We, we agreed since this, right now, is short-term, and again, it could last longer. We just don't know. But for the three months that the funding was requested, we agreed to keep the supervision of the individual, just, just honestly, to be fair to Eric, who probably has lots on his plate, because there are relationships already there, and a lot of the work that's being coordinated is probably going to involve other parts of health services. So, her, her being embedded within health services makes some sense in the short-term. Long-term, I think Cheyenne is still building her model and her program and figuring it out, and it could, it could shift. For now, she'll stay reporting to us, but work very closely with Eric and Cheyenne on the project, or projects, actually.
Well, this is adding resources, and, you know, we know that, you know, we have some, some areas that we need to work on right now. So, I mean, I'm, it's a part of a proceeding, but yeah, this is getting to be those dicey moments where, you know, we're going to start to do stuff. Do, just do stuff, so.
So, the motion. Move to direct staff to prepare a budget adjustment to transfer and extend a limited duration position and additional three months to serve as project manager for upcoming homeless camp removals, and this is through June 30, 2023.
And I will second it. So, as I say, I, I think of an org chart, just like you were saying, yeah, the, the health has an org chart. Having somebody embedded in health, we need to figure out who's leading, who's following, and where we're going to go. So, I mean, this will be another step in the near future, but, you know, that, yeah, we'll get, get real focused. So, with that comment, anything else?
I think I've said enough.
So, seeing done, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, that's it for our agenda today. Is there other items? Yeah. So, I didn't bring anything to update on. I'm, I'm going to go to Salem on Thursday, tomorrow in the afternoon, and be speaking in a Oregon Ag Summit. It's kind of by some, the Oregon Farm Bureau and Land Use Interests, just talking about, you know, sharing information and aligning. Regarding fire maps, though, you know, what, what's the state going to do? I'll be requesting that we disconnect ADUs from the fire maps. You know, that'd be one of my specific asks at this, and I'll be speaking Friday morning.
Oh, and the good news, I heard they had 50 inches at Hoodoo this morning. So, that's, that's excellent, because when I drove over, I think we weren't quite there. So, getting more snow up on the mountain.
I was thinking this morning, if I put my snow blower away and I wash my car, that'll make sure it'll bring in a big old snowstorm. So, maybe we should all start doing that for the farmers, or wash your car.
Yes, definitely. So, and the, I did try and testify this morning. I will be sending a letter in on House Bill 2089, and it's about the marijuana funding that they took 45 million from that. The Commissioners' Monday meeting voted to support that legislation. It had been done, written originally by Representative Nathanson, who had been the mayor of Eugene, and she really sees that public, public safety has been incredibly impacted by that lack of funding. And so, you know, the, the Commissioners all voted to support the bill. And then Rep. Morgan, who had been a Commissioner, addressed the issue and said that we've really got to make sure that that money is getting to be where we need it in our state. Commissioner Thompson from Platteville County said their, their small county had been incredibly impacted by the lack of that funding. And, you know, in Deschutes County, we actually now have a Marijuana Advisory Committee, and the amount of funding that we now get is peanuts compared to what it was before we opted out. So. So, yeah, it's been impactful. And as we heard this morning from the neighbor impact, from John, we still have illegal things happening here that are using our water. So I think that was really my warning.
Participate in the Investment Advisory Committee recruitment process. We had five great candidates, all very engaged in the financial industry. And our new Treasurer, Bill Coon, is looking for two to add to the existing two to make a four-person committee. And I'll be attending that, I think we talked about in our committee assignment. So there was a recruitment process. So the next board meeting or two, we'll have some proposed names for the Investment Advisory Committee.
Good.
Anything else?
Commissioners, we had talked about checking in on a few bills with the Board this morning, just given that we haven't made it through the entire process yet. So Whitney and Jen are joining us if we can do so.
Welcome back, Janice.
And Janice. Yeah.
So this is legislative kind of review of existing bill numbers and topics that are evolving in the state legislature at this time.
And before we jump into the bills, I did just have one other quick other item that I wanted to check in with the Board on. We sent an email related to the Facility Project Review Committee. We've received three applications for our one open seat on that. So just wanting to check in with the Board on your preferences for how we move forward. Lee Randall and I are certainly happy to support the Board in an interview process if that's the next step that you'd like to take, but wanting to check in with you on your preferences in how we may review these applications.
I'd say a 15-minute interview with each one of them would be great.
Okay, we will work with Brenda. Commissioner Bone, does that work?
I was going to say that'd be fine, even a Zoom call may be fine too, you know.
Okay, we will work to set something up and get that on your calendars.
Thanks.
You are welcome. So as Nick mentioned, we were hoping to check in with the Board on a few bills that we have not yet reviewed. So the bills that you see on the report that Jen just passed out are still, the ones that are flagged in yellow are still in draft status, which means that a department has proposed a priority and position for the Board. And we're looking for Board direction on finalizing that priority and position. So in the interest of making good use of Janice's time, let's start with behavioral health.
So acknowledging that Commissioner Chang isn't here, has there been any input or engagement on any of these from Commissioner Chang?
We certainly can follow up with Commissioner Chang. And if there are bills that the Board would like to hold for Friday, we can also note those as well and hold them.
Well, I just acknowledge, we'll say our piece and maybe take a position on it. But there may be different opinions on it too. So we'll see where it goes.
That's helpful. Janice, I don't, is there anything in the Behavioral Health section that you, I can speak to? 2757, but apart from that, is there anything else that's flagged that you feel that would be helpful to cover?
Yeah, I, one of the bills that I mentioned, I think, in the legislative meeting last week, but continues to get some attention and is now officially a priority bill for the Association of Oregon Community Mental Health Programs, is House Bill 2543. And that is the bill that would request that the legislature actually conduct an analysis of the true cost of mandated services, which we as local mental health authority and the designee organization are required to provide. This bill would require that there's some actual costing out of that occurring on a regular basis. That happens in other departments. For example, IDD has a regular way that they look at a workload model and cost out required services. So this is simply saying, we really think that that's probably something that should happen for community mental health services as well. So that bill is a priority. And we would certainly, from a health services lens, recommend that as a Level 2 priority bill and support for your consideration. We can discuss that a little more. I can talk about a couple of other bills. It's up to you.
Any questions from the Board?
So my first thought is, if we were to advocate for this, what, I mean, this is a statewide kind of review of total costs for behavioral health efforts. What's, yeah, what's the output of that? What's the outcome?
I think...
It's going to be, I'm just, pardon me, I'm just thinking it through. But I mean, it's going to be how much the state's going to spend on this and how much the state's going to make themselves spend on this, right? I mean, that's kind of the concept.
At the end of the day, this would be a bill that would have a fiscal impact, yes. So it would involve a conversation about how dollars are appropriated to cover costs. I think from a county lens, again, this is just my perspective, but the advocacy would be, you're telling us that there are services we're statutorily required to provide. They happen to be to some of the most vulnerable, high-needs individuals in the community. So they're not cheap services. And you've not costed them out. We are recommending that you take the step to actually cost out what's required for a system to provide these services. So from my perspective, it's a wise move for a county to ask a state legislator, that legislature that has authority to direct behavior at the county level, to cost out the impact of that at the county level and appropriate funds at a level that makes it reasonable to expect those services can be provided.
So it's, yeah, a structure and implementation of costing for the state legislature to understand, you know, like per population base, this is how much it would be an appropriate investment.
Correct. We think it's a good idea. It's well for IDD. So, and it wouldn't work exactly the same because of course, we have a Medicaid contract that is a reimbursement-based contract that's based on claims. But at least it would be costing out the parts of the system that can't be funded through the Medicaid contract. And there are significant parts of the system that can't be.
But I'm just thinking, should it be support, like actively support and go, you know, tell somebody to do this or monitor? So as I say, the position is support. But, you know, how much of a resource or focus do we put on this bill relative to other bills? That's what I'm just thinking about here.
Yeah, I mean strategically, I think the 988 bill is going to have a lot, the House Bill 2757 is going to have a lot of active advocacy. I'm not sure this one will have as much. So if I were thinking strategically locally about which behavioral health bill to bump to the front of the line as a one and allow testimony or Board support to be more active, this would probably be the bill. I would like to check in with AOC MHP and just see if they think that's a good use of time. But given that this one's looking like it has some legs and might make a difference for the system, it may be a good one to bump up to a one.
So then we back up to, so this is a good conversation, thank you. So we're back up to the big picture. You know, we're managing more complicated cases in the community. We're not building a big state hospital where most complicated cases go as much anymore. So this does promote that concept that if it's funded appropriately, we have complicated, vulnerable cases in our community. And acknowledging it, funding should be appropriate also.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, I just spent hours Monday and Friday on the calls for AOC. And I have a pile like this thick and I didn't bring it downstairs. So I don't, I don't have my reference points from what the Commissioners made the votes on some of these, you know, some of these bills. So, you know, okay, we're going to study every four years. Okay, we, when are we going to do something in Oregon? We just, we study things to death. And when do things get done? Okay, maybe this is something that's good because it is every four years. I believe that they did have support for this bill. But, you know, that's just my feeling after being in this for four years and seeing that we do a lot of studying, but we're still at the bottom of the list, bottom of the list for, you know, residential treatment beds. And, yeah, so I, you know, whatever.
So I support the position of two support at this time.
Yeah, I'd love to see what my notes say from the comments because I do have whole pages on some of these bills.
Yeah, and Commissioner, there are other bills that I think from a, probably from a county Commissioner lens are getting a lot of attention, like the mandated population bills, Senate Bill 319, which is a bill that is attempting to address liability issues for the aid and assist population at the county level. Those are, what I am hearing from AOC MHP and also from Doug is that those bills hopefully will coalesce into an omnibus bill to address mandated populations in some more thoughtful way. That hasn't formed up yet. And so I think until we actually see what that looks like, there's not much to say, other than they're going to have big impacts on how we handle the highest need, highest-risk people in our community and who holds the risk for that and how that risk is handled. So they'll be important.
So you support that support position at this time?
I support, yeah.
We can move to the next one.
Support the support?
You know, so you have, we have 319 here as a watch.
That's the bill, that 319 is the bill that's a watch because that is the bill that is an attempt to address the concerns about liability for the aid and assist population, I believe. And that one, I reached out actually to Cheryl and our AOC MHP lobbyists yesterday. And they're holding off on taking a position on that bill until they get a better understanding of what the intent of the bill is. And they're not the lead on that bill, but believe it's probably an important piece of legislation. They want to watch it closely. So I would just say at this point, watch, keep it at a Priority 2 and keep it in our sights.
And I support that.
Okay, if we segue to 25.
That's fine.
57.
Yeah.
So Jen, you're kind of going to be following up with an update of this. Great, thank you.
And I think, Stephanie, we might have Sarah Crossway on Zoom if we want to...
Sarah Crossway?
Discuss 2757. So we reviewed this in the Legislative Update Meeting on Friday. And I believe I heard, you know, at that time, Board support for a Priority 2 position support.
What page is that on?
On page six.
Six, at the top.
Sarah had flagged on Friday that the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials is taking a position of opposition to this bill. This would add on top of the tax for telephone lines that is already in place and utilized by 911. So I think it adds 50 cents, is that right, Janice?
Yeah, the Governor was recommending 50 cents.
On top of what 911 agencies across the state use as a funding source. And so I think Sarah provided the letter from the Association. And I think the concern is just by adding the 50 cents on top of the existing tax, that could potentially take away from potential future increases that 911 organizations may look to make. But, so we wanted to just flag that for the Board. Sarah, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add to that summary.
Nope, I don't have anything to add. I'm here if there's any questions that come up regarding this. But yeah, I think that was the main concern. We support 988 fully. You know, we're working with Adam weekly on this project, so we understand the need. I think the concern for the public safety answering points throughout Oregon is that that increase in the tax that could impact them, some of these centers, that is one of their sole sources of funding besides billing the agencies. In Deschutes County, we're in a unique position because of our levy. But we also haven't had to touch that levy or increase it. So, you know, we rely on the money that comes through the telephone tax for operating funds. And some of those agencies in the state of Oregon could see an impact if this does happen and there's any kind of change to the funding for the 911 centers in the future.
I'll say at the back of your packet is the letter in opposition and the letter in support. So there's two separate...
Oh, good, we can see both.
The letter in support was put together by NAMI and a number of organizations that work with people with mental health conditions. And no surprises there. And that was why we were recommending support, because it helps cover the cost of standing up a statewide call center and helps also cover the cost of mobile crisis. Although I'd like to see the mechanism for how that rolls out, if it does indeed cover the cost.
Is this going to be a center in Oregon that's going to answer these 988 calls?
This is a statewide, this is a federal mandate, really, for states to stand up a 988 line to deal with crisis. And partly to try to take some of the volume off of 911 call centers and create another call center for people with psychiatric emergencies. And the, yes, it would be a statewide call center. We're using it already. We already use it as one of our ways that we get crisis calls.
How's the center that answers the senior abuse and the child abuse? That center, how's that one doing?
I don't know lately.
The one that you had to hold for 45 minutes, 41 minutes?
I don't know. I think there are still sometimes call volume issues. I haven't heard as many complaints. So usually, no news is good news in my world.
No, it's actually not good. Because remember, the kids weren't in school and more things were happening to the children.
Well, yes, there were fewer calls being made during COVID because a lot of the ways that abuse comes to light...
Right, weren't being recognized.
Weren't being recognized, yeah. So I really don't know, Commissioner, where things are with that. I have not heard complaints recently, but that's as much information as I have.
Okay.
Yeah. We're using the 988 call center now. I'm not hearing that there are any major concerns or issues. We worked for almost a year to sort of figure out, how do we adapt that into our local model for responding to crisis? And we've made that move.
I'd be comfortable just putting it at a watch position. You know, this is, you know, it's a good hot topic. It's new taxes on mobile phones. You know, our experience, my wife was running a cell phone company. And sure enough, there's no sales tax in Oregon, except she had to have a side account, paperwork associated with it. She was writing checks to the, you know, whatever, for the current 25 cents or whatever it is. What a hassle, you know. So the structure for even collecting this was really a burden on small companies in Oregon. You know, I'm sure corporate America has it built into their billing systems, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's two positions already on this. You know, when we have a 911 system, it says you call when you need help. And, you know, so it's like it kind of crosses. Yes, you're going to call if you need help and it's already in there. So now we're going to say, well, call 988. So, I mean, if the legislatures, this is what they do. So as I said, I'd stay neutral on this at this time, as a starting point. We can take a position if we need to in the future, but, you know, just for the spreadsheet.
Neutral for now was fine. I mean, it was like this morning, I listened to four farmers testifying about 2142, the cat tax. Someone was a blackberry producer. And most of, 99% of the blackberries they produce go out of state. And I believe Oregon is like one of the major producers. But the cat tax now impacts all these people. And they were saying that in their business, you know, they can't afford it. You know, you see everything we buy now, it actually, you know, it's not called a sales tax, but it's definitely there with that cat tax. And your people are paying it all over the place. So it's, that was just kind of a different side to little taxes. And, yeah, so I can understand both sides of the story. Thanks, Sarah, for being there. And yet, there's a really powerful group that really wants it. So federal mandate with no money behind it, is that what it is? So we have to, we have to fund it, we're required to have it. And this is coming from the federal government.
I, that could be a way to describe what happened, yes. I think, I do think the intent is not to duplicate, but to take some burden off 911. And Sarah may know more about, you know, any anticipated long-term impacts of having people able to call something other than 911 for psychiatric emergencies. But we'll see how that plays out.
Sarah, is this removing some of your burden?
Not quite yet, not that we've noticed.
Time will tell.
I think this is going to be kind of one of those things, we're going to have to watch it and see a year from now, what, you know, what the advantages have been. And if we've noticed a significant difference. You have a lot of people that are used to calling 911. And so to transition them to a different number, it'll be interesting to see what happens with it.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything else within the Behavioral Health section that's still flagged with a highlight that you...
There's 2651, which was the workforce bill. I think I talked quite a bit about that last Friday. I don't know that I have anything new to say about it. The...
Page five?
Is it page five?
The bottom of five, 2651. And we said support.
Yep. So just, I think for the Board, is there anything in the span of Pages five through eight of this report that you have questions about the priority and position that health services... that Health Services is proposing or that you'd like to have additional discussion on? We can adopt what's currently pending or we can continue to hold them in kind of a pending status.
For clarity, the workforce bill is really just a vehicle to continue to fund 2949, which is from the last legislative session, which provided some workforce funds a little differently than House Bill 4004, which was the original Behavioral Health Workforce Stability Fund. So it's, it is, my understanding is it's a vehicle to continue to fund that account, which provides for things like moving stipends, paying for incentives, paying for licensure certification, tuition reimbursement, a whole host of things that behavioral health programs can do to try to grow their field, create pipelines for people to get degrees and provide incentives for the workforce.
Senate Bill 621 appropriates monies for OHA to allocate mental health programs for oversight of residential facilities. Do you have, do we have, is that a future thing as in more residential facilities? And is that like the 14-bed facility we're talking about or other just?
Those three bills, 621, 622, and 623 are part of that group of mandated population bills that I am hearing may emerge as an omnibus bill to address this mandated population, meaning people that get committed for a variety of reasons, PSRB, aid and assist, civil commitment. So I, Holly, I think, had reviewed these first and marked them as support. I think they're going to morph and change. I'm not really focused on them at this point, but we'll keep you up to date on what happens with those.
Do we have residential facilities other than our secure residential treatment facility that are coming?
We are waiting to see. So best care is in contract discussions with the OHA about the proposed, the approved SRTF that they are now negotiating the amount of that grant.
We have an alcohol and drug treatment facility going in rural Deschutes County and the residents are asking about it. And it sounds like it's kind of an outright land use that was shocking to the neighbors. So I'm wondering, that's kind of what I'm asking about. Does that have anything to do with this?
Is that a best care? I don't know. I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't know about that. I probably should, but I don't.
You're talking about the Somerset one?
Yeah.
Somerset, we had a hearing on it. The neighbors had no way of stopping it. Only if they have a really strong HOA could they go through it to stop it from that point. But it's a rural neighborhood and it's a 16-bed facility converting a house. Well, they're converting a house. So.
Yeah, I mean, this is a.
We'll communicate about that one.
This is a challenge. You know, there are supersiting bills also being proposed. They're probably not going to be popular that say.
Well, people should understand this, you know, because they, we had many people come to us and say, we had no idea this was even possible. You know, we won't let people build an accessory dwelling, you know, and this is stepping out of your world, but we won't let people build an accessory dwelling in it. We've got this lockdown system, except for this scenario. And all of a sudden, there's going to be all kinds of people on one rural property.
Yeah, they used to be six, called six-packs in Southern California. They'd be all over neighborhoods, you know, converting for drug, you know, getting people off of drugs.
Well, those people are in our communities one way or the other.
No, I mean, there's nothing here.
Well, I'm saying, she's right on it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
People come to us saying, where did this come from? We've never heard of anything like this.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, the people are like, oh, it's okay, we're allowed to do this. Pretty complex.
I'm sure it is a big surprise to the neighborhood.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So anything else in the health then?
I don't think so.
So, yeah, I think staff, unless the board would like to provide other direction, will adopt what's been proposed for the Health Services bills in the report with the understanding that we can certainly revisit them as they may change throughout the session.
That's fine. So stuff that's highlighted in support is going to go officially to support at this time and we'll talk about it as it evolves.
Yep. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Whitney and Jen, for keeping all this organized.
Mostly to Jen.
Commissioners.
I do have a question about Senate Bill 653. We really have very little state land in Deschutes County that's wildfire prone. Is that a fact?
Are you in natural resources?
Natural resources.
Yeah, it's the last page, 11, yeah.
Yeah, my plan, if it worked for the board, was to hold the bills that Kevin has reviewed for Friday when he's here to speak to them and to use the remainder of our time today to run through bills that we've kind of nestled under either the board or administration since we have staff here that can speak to them. Will that work or should we try and see if Kevin can join?
No, no, Freddie's fine. I just, that's my question is, I thought we did have some state land, pretty teeny, but some.
We can certainly follow up with Kevin on that and have him be prepared to speak to that on Friday if that works.
I mean, there's a state forestry office right down the road that I go by every day. So I'm thinking like, why do they have an office in Deschutes County if they don't have a little bit of land here?
Yeah. And I don't, I couldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
I think Department of Forestry is the other firefighting agency for larger parcels, remember?
Right, yes.
If you're in the district, it's five acres. Anything more is under the Department of Forestry for fuel, for fire response.
All right. So if we want to look at page three of the report, these are, there are two bills listed there that staff has flagged simply to get them onto the report and because the board has not yet discussed them. So Commissioner Dara, I don't know if you, Senate Bill 673 relates to manufactured dwelling or recreational vehicle parks outside of UGBs. And we had simply marked this as a priority two, no position, because the board had not yet had a discussion.
Oh, that's my bill.
Yes. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about.
Oh, my gosh. Well, I did talk.
Should we support it?
Well, I don't know. You know, it is something a little, it's asking for a lot, over 300 single-wide manufactured homes, maybe a little bit of workforce housing. I do, I did talk to a couple of other senators on Monday and they were going to check it out. Hopefully Senator Weber, who was the mayor of Tullamook at one time, and she's on the housing committee. So I'm hoping that she'll, I can reach out to her and see if she'll add her name to this. So.
But we confirm it as a position of support.
Yeah, that would be lovely. It is Deschutes County and it is a very unique thought to actually have a manufactured home park. And it would be by those, what, 540 acres that the county owns. So maybe it could be like a private point, public partnership just by the fact that it's in that same area.
So we'll go ahead and confirm that. Moving up to House Bill 2459, this is the bill that I think Nick shared an email about that came from COVA last week. So this is the bill that would support $50 million for the arts and culture sector in Oregon, including $759,000 for the High Desert Museum. So COVA was sharing a potential letter of support and looking to see if the county would be interested in providing support for this bill. So again, we've just marked it as two, no position to get it in front of you today for discussion.
Which number is that, Whitney?
This is 2459, which is on page three. It's the top bill on page three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes. At our COVA meeting the other day, Dana asked us to please support this. So, yeah, the High Desert could definitely use some help.
So, I mean, I'd like to take a support position, but you know, maybe not do too much advocacy. I mean, if, you know, I can imagine there's X amount of dollars in the state legislature and this is one that just needs to be prioritized. And we're already asking for money for a courthouse, so.
Right. We need our courthouse more.
But, yeah, we can take a support position with just the, I don't know, a little asterisk that says, behind the courthouse.
Perfect. And then moving to the front page of the report, we have a few bills. Nick, I think, had sent some communication related to House Bill 2505, which is the top bill. This is relating to increasing the maximum percentage of tax that cities or counties can impose on the sale of marijuana items. And Nick, I don't know if you want to add any other additional information there on that bill?
This is the bill that I informed the board that the city had asked Eric King and I to co-sign that would give the city the opportunity to ask taxpayers through a vote if they would support increasing the tax from 3% to 10%. And then if so, 20% of those proceeds of the tax would come to the county and it wouldn't have strings attached to how we spend it. But that's just a question for the board. Do we want to sustain that or neutral or take another position?
I'd, I'd stay neutral on that. I mean, Deschutes County, it's nice to have revenue, but this is taxes. It's a taxed and controlled environment already. As I say, if the legislature gives people that authority, that's fine, but it's nothing that I'd be specifically asking for.
I think we still have a really strong black market.
This would be bad for the black market situation.
Right, right. Because then it's going to maybe send more people to the black market. I don't know. Where it's not tested, you know, I think that's part of the problem when it's in the black market, you know, the pesticides and everything that are in it. It has more challenges besides the high THC levels.
And Senator Finley and Representative Owens, you know, that's on the Oregon Idaho border, that's, there's a lot of activity there and it's a whole different scenario. So as I say, I mean, I'd like to stay neutral in it, I guess is where I'd stay.
From 3% to 10%? Is there, is what the bill says?
That's what, it would allow cities to put a measure on the ballot to ask voters if the voters would support the increase.
To get 20% of that increase.
Yeah, so the, right, the tax would go from 3% to 10%. And then if it's approved, then counties would receive 20% of the tax.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's not our thing. So you support neutral position?
Of today. I'll have to think about it.
We'll put neutral for today?
Yeah.
Okay, neutral.
Coming down page.
We're negotiating hard up here.
Yes. House Bill 2889, so this would establish an Oregon Housing Needs Analysis and create a timeline to adopt rules and implement components of that analysis. So it also, and again, this one, we, it looks like we sent to Community Development and then Administration reviewed as well. I think it was flagged as a two, just to bring it before you, but it looks like through Community Development's review, they did not indicate a priority in terms of needing to track this for the legislative session. So I think this might be one that unless the board has an interest, we can probably let go from the report, but certainly up to you if you want to continue to track it.
Well, and they're going to do the rules by 26. I think we, yeah, don't we need to do some more studies? How many houses are we short in Oregon? Like honestly and truly, it's a lot, but let's not adopt the new rules for, what, three more years? Oh, my gosh.
You can drop it.
Okay.
Like, guys, we need the houses now.
All right. The bottom of page one, there is proposed legislation that would allow county commissioners to have the same courtesies that are extended to members of the Legislative Assembly and likely other county elected officials when they're testifying. So I think it would potentially make it more expedient for you and other elected county officials to provide testimony, which I.
Like this morning, yes. The lobbyists got to speak. They announced the first four people and the lobbyists got to speak. And then, you know, it was, there wasn't time for me.
And I do know that.
It may still be going, it's only been a minute and a half.
I'm sure it's over by now. I told my grandmother.
Take a support position.
Sounds good.
Sounds like a like, a nice idea. I thought they already did that. I didn't realize that we needed a bill for it. Normally when I'm on. Yeah, normally when I'm on something. Well, the president of AOC was speaking, so that was good.
And then the last bill that we were hoping to review with you today is on page two, Senate Bill 471. And this relates to Wolf Management Compensation and Proactive Trust Fund funding. This bill, as the board knows, you know, we don't have our committee up and running yet, but this would appropriate money from the general fund to the Department of Agriculture for this program. And so just flagging it here for you. And I think we talked a little bit when we were in the process of establishing the committee that there is a lot of interest from counties around the state for this funding. And in some cases, counties communicating that they'd like to see more funding allocated to the program. So just flagging it.
As I shared yesterday, on the call I was part of, in Baker County, the cattle dog 45 feet out of the, outside the house was killed by a wolf. And these people have little children. So can you imagine ever letting your child out of your sight? No. Apparently they said a lot of, you know, a lot of cows been killed. I don't know, maybe they've got a lot of snow on the ground out there, but yeah, it sounds like it's really needed. So I'm very happy to support it.
That's fine.
That's the other side of it because of course they've spotted a wolf, you know, in my neighborhood.
Well, and this whole system is in place because it's a, you know, managed species or environmentally protected. So now we just have to add more layers of response to whenever there's a wolf kill. Support's fine.
Okay. So we'll follow up with natural resources on Friday, but I think other than that, we're caught up, so.
Great. Well, it's good to take time to really just digest some of these things and see the letters of support and opposition and understand what we're doing to be strategic.
Thank you.
If I could get this sheet for Friday, Friday morning, like tomorrow, so that I can cross-reference with AOC so I'm more up to date, that would be really helpful.
That's perfect. We can run it for you early. And what we'll likely do is we typically run it as close as we can to the meeting in case hearings are scheduled, but we'll get you an early copy and then we'll just run it again.
Because we, we went through a whole, you know, there's like five different divisions of AOC and all the different bills that we went through.
And we're happy to do that.
There were some good ones.
If that's helpful for you to look through and cross-reference, but whatever works best, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? And no executive sessions today? Okay. Seeing nothing, meeting adjourned.